If I may have your attention, it is time for us to now call the meeting, to start the meeting so that we will move in a timely fashion. Okay, so let me see. So, good afternoon and welcome. The November 16th, 2023 meeting of the Tennessee State University Board of Trustees is now called to order. As you will note in your board materials for today's board meeting, we have several items on the agenda today. And the next item on this agenda is roll call and decoration of quorum. But Attorney Pendleton, do we have to do the electronic means?
We don't, we do not, we have a physical presence of a quorum, so we're fine.
Okay.
But we will need to add, we do have people participating electronically.
Yeah, we do it second part. Okay, so at this point in time, we will go to, at this time, we need to call the roll. So Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Present.
Trustee Corbill. Trustee Andre Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Lewis. Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee McKenzie.
He's getting him.
Trustee Pennick.
Present.
Trustee Walker.
Present.
Trustee Wimberly.
Here.
Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we have a quorum.
Okay. Board members, if you cannot hear us speak to the other board members, please state so now. For each board member participating electronically, please identify any individuals who are present in the location for which you are participating. The first action item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda items, the minutes of the September 14th, 2023 board meeting, audit committee meeting, finance and budget committee meeting, academic affairs and student affairs committee meeting, and executive committee meeting, and the June 28th, 23 housing committee meeting. You have in your November 16th, 2023 board materials, the minutes for each of these meetings. During their meetings, each committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the respective meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Okay. It is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the consent agenda item as contained in the board materials for November 16th, 2023 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie. Trustee Pennick.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Trustee Corbill is on.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Corbill.
Yeah, trustee Corbill.
Aye.
The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the audit committee report. As the audit committee chair, I will report the actions and other items from today's audit committee meeting. The audit committee met today to act on one item, receive reports on three items, and go into executive session to discuss matters deemed confidential under.
Trustee McKenzie.
Under state law. The audit committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September 14th, 2023 audit committee meeting minutes. In addition, the audit committee reviewed and discussed completed internal and external audits, outstanding audit issues, and audit offices' internal quality assessment. This concludes the audit committee report. The next item on the agenda is the finance and budget committee report. The chair recognizes the finance and budget committee chair, trustee Lewis, who will report the action information items from today's finance and budget committee meeting. And before he comes, let me just say that the work of the board is done in the committees. And Dr. Lewis has a special very participating committee. But there's a lot done on the committee side. So when we come here, we're making summaries. Dr. Lewis.
The finance and budget committee met today to act on three items and receive report on eight items. The finance and budget committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September 14th, 2023 finance and budget committee meeting minutes, the fiscal year 2023 institutional revised budget, and the scholarship plan for the academic year 2024 to 2025. Additionally, President Glover and her team provided reports on capital planning and facilities. A master plan update, the finance and budget report, and institutional development report. An update on enrollment and scholarships. Personnel action plan update, a customer service report, and a board housing committee report by trustee Pennick. The finance and budget committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the fiscal year 2024 institutional revised budget. You have in your November 16th, 2023 board materials and materials related to this agenda item. On behalf of the finance and budget committee, I move to approve the fiscal year 2024 institutional revised budget as contained in the board materials for November 16th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 institutional revised budget as contained in the board materials for the November 16th, 2023 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Andre Johnson. Trustee Corbill.
Aye.
Trustee William Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pennick.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Finally, the finance and budget committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the scholarship plan for the academic year 2024, 2025. You have in your November 16th, 2023 board materials and materials related to this agenda item. On behalf of the finance and budget committee, I move to approve the scholarship plan academic year 2024, 2025 as contained in the board materials for the November 16th, 2023 board meeting.
And trustee Lewis, that's plan as amended.
Plan as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the amended scholarship plan for academic year 2024, 2025 as contained in the board materials for the November 16th, 2023 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Corbill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pennick.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The motion is approved.
Chair Cole, this concludes, thank God, the finance and budget committee report.
Dr. Lewis, thank you for your report and for all the work that you did in your committee meeting.
You're welcome.
And other members of the finance and budget committee. The next item on the agenda is the academic affairs and student affairs committee report. The chair recognizes the academic affair and student affairs committee chair, trustee Martin, to report on the action items and other items from today's academic affairs and student affairs committee meeting.
Thank you, Chair Cole. The academic affairs and student affairs committee met today to consider and vote on two agenda items and to receive reports on four other agenda items. Information regarding these items are in your materials for the November 16th, 2023 board meeting. The academic affairs and student affairs committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September 14th, 2023 academic affairs and student affairs committee meeting minutes and the new academic program, the Master of Science in Nutrition and Wellness. The academic affairs and student affairs committee also received reports on the university's international activities, SACS, and other accreditation matters, academic affairs, and student affairs. The academic affairs and student affairs committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of a new academic program, the Master of Science in Nutrition and Wellness. On behalf of the academic affairs and student affairs committee, I move to approve the new academic program, the Master of Science in Nutrition and Wellness as contained in your board materials for the November 16th, 2023 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the new academic program, the Masters of Science in Nutrition and Wellness as contained in the board materials for the November 16th, 2023 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Corbill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pennick.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Chair Cole. That concludes the academic affairs and student affairs report.
Thank you, trustee Martin, and the members of the academic affairs and student affairs committee for the tremendous amount of work that you also do in your committee. The next item on the agenda is the executive committee report. As the chair of the board and chair of the executive. Oh, I didn't.
No, that's fine. In the item to the board resolution items, I didn't know if reporting out that, that was going to be the place that you're going to have him report out the specifics or wait for the president's report.
No, I'm going to finish the executive committee report, and then he will be the second person that I call after the Levi Watkins. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is the executive committee report. As the chair of the board of the executive committee, I will report the action and the information items from today's executive committee meeting. The executive committee met today and discussed to vote on one action item here reports on three. The executive committee voted to recommend to the full board approval of the September 14th executive committee meeting minutes. The status on the board resolution will be done in just a short while and was not presented in that committee. Okay, this concludes the executive committee report. At this time, I would, we have a very special treat. I would like for the Levi Watkins Institute to come in, and we recognize President Glover would make any information or comments that he would make to make on that item.
Thank you. I'm going to call Ms. Barbara Merrell. And that's hers to come on, she's coming back in now. Ms. Barbara Merrell, come over there.
Good afternoon. I have visitors who are also invited to this meeting, and I'd like for them, Chair Cole, to be able to come in now. Is that okay? Thank you. You can stop where you are now. No, we're going to circle. We're going to circle. Would the executive committee of the Dr. Levi Watkins Institute too join me at the podium? Dr. Cole.
Yes.
President Glover. Members of the Board of Trustees, colleagues, and friends. At the last board meeting, Dr. Cole requested that we do a report of the Levi Watkins Institute and bring all the students. So, Dr. Cole, here are the students in the Dr. Levi Watkins Institute.
Dean Merrell, thank you so much. And to the students, you don't know me individually, but I see you at Maharry. Nothing gives me more pleasure than to see you walking around with that white coat with Tennessee State University on it. I am not just saying that here. I think I call Dean Merrell every time that I see one of the students. So, and tell her the same thing, oh, they look so good. So, thank you, these students are very high academically achieving students, and we just, we thank you for being a part of this program. It's just, it's awesome. I'm just warm, my heart is warm to see you all. Thank you, Dean Merrell, for everything that you do.
Thank you, Dr. Cole. Joining me at the podium today is Dr. Nolan McMurray, who is dean of the School of Life and Physical Sciences. This program is in the department or in the school of the College of Life and Physical Sciences, and we were very grateful for the opportunity to be a part of that school. Thank you, Dr. McMurray. And Dr. Milton. Okay, Dr., the other person's here behind me, Mrs. LaLita Hards, program coordinator. Dr. Sharon Peters. Is teaching a class at this moment and unable to come. Dr. John Robinson. Ms. Alicia Hawkins, who's program advisor. And Ms. Reno Thompson, who is also program advisor. Just a little information about the program to share with the board. And I'll share it in this order. History first, secondly, our partners, third, our program, and fourth, our financial supporters. So let's start with the history. Tennessee State University Office of the President established the Dr. Levi Watkins Jr. Institute. The institute was named for a most distinguished graduate of Tennessee State, Dr. Levi Watkins Jr., who became an outstanding physician, a great heart surgeon. He performed the first surgery to implant an automated defibrillator in a human patient in 1980. Dr. Watkins blazed a trail for underrepresented minorities in medical education. He led efforts to address disparities in healthcare and advance health equity for medically underserved communities. So why do we think, or why did Dr. Glover think of the importance of having a program similar to this? In the nation and around the world, the virus revealed a need for greater commitment to eliminating health disparities among underrepresented communities and advancing health equity, which is what Dr. Watkins stood for. The need was demonstrated to develop a program to address the expansion of a pipeline of young individuals from underrepresented communities from high school to college who wish to become physicians and dentists and demonstrate their compassion, knowledge, complex medical skills of Dr. Watkins. You're looking at them today. Therefore, this institute now provides a unique program to recruit, select, and support the medical education of these students from underrepresented communities who become physicians and dentists. This program will increase the number of trained physicians and dentists who will go into communities of greater burden of healthcare needs, thus making a significant difference. After the death of Dr. Watkins, his sister, Dr. Marie Garraway, suggested a memorial for Dr. Watkins and committed one half a million dollars, one half million dollars, in an endowed scholarship to assist in support of the Dr. Levi Watkins Jr. Scholarship Fund. The scholarship committee, 2018 and 2019, provided lectures on health disparities. In 2020, Dr. Glover appointed a committee and gave the charge to develop a program which became the Dr. Levi Watkins Institute. The institute is composed of five different parts. One, the lecture series. Two, the endowed scholarship. Three, the Dr. Levi Watkins Maharry Medical College, Tennessee State University Dental Accelerated Pathway Program, the Dr. Levi Watkins Healthcare Scholars, and the Dr. Levi Watkins Society. And when we look further, we look at our partnerships. Tennessee State University and Maharry Medical College agreed by MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, to revitalize the original MOU, which existed in the 1950s. And we developed a three-year accelerated program where students could receive a BS degree in biology in three years. With a 3.5 GPA and acceptable MCAT score, the students can proceed to Maharry Medical College. So outstanding students graduating from high school with an ACT score of 28 or more, SAT score of 13, 10 or more, and unweighted GPA of 3.5 or more were invited to apply. These are the students who have been accepted. While Maharry could only provide early admission to 10 medical and five dental students, it was important to establish MOUs with other medical schools to extend the opportunity to more students. Thus, the Dr. Levi Watkins Healthcare Scholars Program was established, and partnerships were sought with other medical schools. Sidney Kimball Medical School at Jefferson University in Philadelphia will partner with the institute, provide early admission to two students in the Levi Watkins Program who are in the Healthcare Scholars Program. Partnerships with other medical schools are presently being developed. This includes the Thomas Fritz College of Medicine at Belmont University. Dr. Levi Watkins Jr. Society was designed to assist students who are sophomores and above, and who have a 3.5, 2.3, 3.5 GPA. There's about 50 students in the Dr. Levi Watkins Society, and they are in the four-year track. The program structure. The Levi Watkins Institute program structure is based on the cohort model. This requires students that are accepted into the program to remain together as a cohort throughout the program. They are housed in the same residential facility, take classes together, and provided other opportunities to study together. Social activities, Dean Stevenson, and their overall college life experience with the entire student population are encouraged and supported to maintain a well-balanced scholar. Students in the institute are classified in a cohort based on their entrance into the program. We currently have three. Presently, there are 49 students enrolled. So I'm going to introduce the different cohorts. So students in Cohort One, would you raise your hand? So you see on this side over here, on the left-hand side. Cohort One are students who have been here two years, and they will be graduating in May and headed to medical school. Would you raise your hands again? Okay. Cohort Two, would you raise your hands? Okay, Cohort Two entered their second year at Tennessee State University and have one more year to go. Thank you. And Cohort Three, our new cohort for this year. Well, this is their first year, and they've got two more years to go. So look at them. And on last evening, the group that was assembled behind me and I interviewed students for Cohort Four. And I think we approved of six already for Cohort Four. So the program is still moving forward. Our partnerships, TSU, as situated with HCA Healthcare. We partnered in a major way in the fall of 2022. In a joint press conference, the Nashville-based Health System gifted TSU $1.4 million to provide scholarships for aspiring students wanting to become medical doctors. HCA, TriStar Health, donation will provide scholarship opportunities for 12 students enrolled in the program. HCA Healthcare Scholars have provided several things with hands-on shadowing, mentoring, seminars, leadership sessions, career guidance, and internship opportunities. Now I want to tell you about who our other contributors are, and certainly we are looking for more. Our other contributors include Microsoft, Regions Bank, Regions Foundation, Truist Bank, Lowe's, Walmart, the March Foundation, the Brown A. Collins Scholarship Fund, the Briar's Family Giving Fund, and Tennessee State University alumni continue to be strong supporters of the program with contributions and donations. So thank you very much for your time, Dr. Cole. Do you have any questions or comments?
Comment, I want to say to you, Dr. Glover. You didn't, and I always refer to her as Dean Merrell, Ms. Barbara Merrell. This is awesome. These are, this is a story we need to promote for Tennessee State University. And I see these students, they didn't just dress up crisp for today. They look good like this. And I don't see every one of them, but every one that I have seen has always been very neatly dressed and crisp. And to the staff, thank you all for all that you do. Very quickly, I know we have Ms. Camille Haskins from the medical side of Maharry, and we have Mr. Jaden Knight from the dental school. Very quickly, if you could just come, just make a very quick statement about what the program makes to you before they put me out because you all are my favorite program here, okay? But if you could come very quickly and just make a very quick statement, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. How's everyone doing tonight?
All right.
Um, so long story short, I am absolutely an advocate for this program. This program has taken me very, very far, much further than I thought I would have gotten at this point in my college career. For me personally, this program represents immense opportunity, endless opportunity, I would say, to fulfill all my dreams regarding medical school and beyond. Do you want to?
Yeah, my piece is very short. Um, if you know me personally, you know I come from a family who only graduated with their high school diploma. So like, being in this spot right here and wearing this white coat is something I never pictured, and this program, you know, granted me this opportunity.
Okay. Before you all, have everybody in the room in tears. Again, Dr. Glover, Mrs. Barbara Merrell, and staff, thank you all so much. Students, thank you, we're so proud of you, and we know you're going to do well. Other committee.
Thank you so very much.
Okay.
Let's give another applause for this thing.
Committee and staff, yes.
Thank you. Camille, you want to come out this way?
They got to go to class, I think.
Maybe they can come out this way.
Yeah. Don't they look good? Oh, I think.
Y'all want to stay, you have to go to class and stay.
And it's all, this is the story we need to hear.
Give another applause.
Yes. This is awesome. Okay, you know, Dr. Glover, I guess it was some time ago, two or three years ago, talked about funding that was needed. two or three years ago, talked about funding that was needed for this program, and she tapped Mrs. Merle to participate in it. So now we see the results of what she was continuously badgering us about for funding for that program. Okay, I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Jason Evans to come and present his report on the memorandum. Sir, I'm not going to follow my normal procedure of going through myself with each question. I will address, ask you to address each item in the memorandum just to give us an update on where you are in time. So I'm looking, because we have other things, I want to make sure that we get through.
So you, you would like brevity? So if you?
I would like, I would like brevity and completeness at the same time.
I can do that.
I know you can.
I've been trained.
Okay.
All right, so, um, I provided the Board Resolution Matrix. It should be 170, I think it is. It's actually, I don't have the slides, it's actually three pages. It's a matrix, it's a red, uh, stoplight chart, should be back there. If not, then I'll just go over it. And so what I tried to create with the matrix is a quick look and really indicate where we are on each of the items. And of course, um, maybe it's in the executive portion, since we skipped the executive committee. 165, thank you. So the intent here was you could get a quick look. And of course, green means that we're on track or we institutionalized the practice of that item. Amber is, it's ongoing, and red means that it either hasn't started, it's not resourced, or we need a decision, which is not good. And so just to summarize, we don't have any red. But item number one is, as you can see, is green in terms of engaging and enhancing oversight. So no issues there. More or less, we've institutionalized this as part of the board. Same with the Board of Trustees, the Executive Committee, and examine the committee structure. That is more or less institutionalized in the practice of the board. Number three, it's ongoing. You can see in the remarks there, the actions that have been taken by the board in terms of that particular item. Number four, in terms of, you can see in the remarks again. I'm not going to read it unless you want me to. It's real brief in the remarks, but it's ongoing. Number five, more or less, that has been institutionalized as part of the board. And number six, the same thing. And this gets to the enrollment classification data that you asked for, but we'll provide that along with enrollment data. You were asking for the classification by freshmen. This includes for this year, but as part of the resolution report, this is where we were reporting this, but also we reported in enrollment data and during the enrollment update. Number seven, same thing here. Strategies were provided for the personal action plan. Again, you heard today the update on that. Number eight, I've been hired. You heard from Mr. Radford, and the enrollment management operations and assessment continues, as you heard from me today on that part, and the guidance that you provided to me on what you need. Number nine, I think we've institutionalized that. There was some discussion whether a dollar-figure is considered a material 10%. And I think you talked through that today. Number 10, same thing here. Believe these committees and this process have been institutionalized. You can see in the remarks. Will Rafford talked a little bit about the SBC, particularly last time you, there was some discussion about the resident halls, and my understanding that those will go through the SBC in December. Number 11, still ongoing here in terms of what the requirement is. We got the requirement today for the strategic plan to present next time and some other data. Number 12, the last item. That's institutionalized, that's what we're doing now. Any questions?
Uh, Mr. Evans, thank you. I would ask you, would you ask them to please put, I like that chart that you have?
Mm-hmm.
You call it the stoplight chart, I think.
Yes.
Okay, would please put that on slides?
Oh, absolutely.
Next time?
Absolutely.
That's, that's great. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much. At this point in time, and thank you, so if I summarize what you? If I summarize what, during Evans just said, then we don't have any items in the red category, and we have items, of course, that are continuously ongoing, that we're working on, and we have some items that we actually haven't completed. So the most important thing to me is we don't have anything in red.
Correct.
But I like that color-coordinated chart, okay? So ask them, please put it up, so.
I'll make sure I coordinate with the secretary so we can get that done next time.
Secretary, please take care of that, thank you, sir. Okay, the next, the next item on the agenda is to talk about the report on the status of TSU land grant underfunding matters. And Madam President, would you address that, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The agenda includes two items, the report on the underfunding and then the President's Report. And so I'd like to, with your permission, combine those two because they're very interrelated. But first, I'd like to call our students out because we have students who have really been participatory in this effort. I'd like you to hear their perspective first, and then I'll go into the President's Report. So I'm going to ask our SGA President, Darrell Taylor, our SGA Vice President, Krishonda O'Quinn, as well as our Student Trustee, if you want to join them. Mr. Sean, would you, if you don't mind, the three of you go up there. They have been very active in making meetings with the Governor's Office and Washington and other places, so I'd like you to hear from them. So Darrell, you going to start?
Thank you so much, President Glover. As you mentioned, I'm Darrell Taylor. I currently serve as the Student Government Association President. We just want to give you some background information on the students' perspective of the $2.1 billion underfunding. So as you all know, it took the university by storm. We were first notified by the U.S. Department of Education and Agriculture. And of course, a lot of students had questions concerning why we were even put in this situation as we see our neighboring institutions and the things that they receive and the infrastructure of their campus and the quality of their academic programs. And we look at our university and see how much Tennessee State University has pivoted and adjusted to the lack of resources that the state of Tennessee has provided for us. So it is baffling as a student, you know, to be in a predicament of this nature. But I do feel that at any moment in Tennessee State University's history where it's been time to, you know, call for change, it's been the students at the forefront. So with that being said, the student body is totally prepared to just learn a little bit more about this issue so that we can be at the front of this issue, especially as the committees begin to meet in January. So with that being said, as student leaders, we've taken quite a few steps to raise awareness about this issue, allow students to understand a little bit more, and then kind of tag in all bases. So as it relates to alumni and the community, the student body, and even the administration with faculty and staff. So we began with our trip to Washington, D.C., where we spoke with members of the Congressional Black Caucus, as well as other legislators like Senator Marsha Blackburn. We also spoke with Don Lemon. So we're just, the main goal was just to raise awareness in that moment to make sure that Tennessee State University was not being forgot about, forgotten about in the heat of this very pressing issue. We also have a goal of working with the state of Tennessee to take the lead in this charge. As you know, we're the number one most underfunded institution that is on the list of HBCUs, land-grant institutions. So we want to be sure that we take the lead, that we're being the innovators, and that we're causing further change at the forefront of the level. So we've been meeting with Advisor DeBerry, the advisor to the governor. We've been working with President Glover and just other members of the legislature to gain conversations with the governor. And with that, we do plan to ask students to invite some of those lawmakers to campus so that they can understand, you know, what we experience day-to-day by students. We don't want them to be present in these sessions in Januaries and not even have step foot on our campus. So we would take, we want to take the opportunity to make sure that they're interacting with us in real time so that they understand how important it is that we feel that we are receiving adequate resources and equal opportunities for education from all of our counterparts. So you can.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Krishonda O'Quinn. I currently serve as the SGA Executive Vice President. In this role, I am chairperson of General Assembly, and that is essentially student organizations at TSU. So I'll be detailing how we've been curating student engagement within this movement. Immediately following our first meeting with the Senior Advisor to the Governor, John DeBerry, trustee Wimberly, myself, and President Taylor immediately met, and we started to think of ideas on how we can get the organizations and the students involved in this. So we thought of creating a student task force. And the student task force consists of different students that represent different parts of the university. We have maybe 10 to 12 in different majors, classifications, et cetera. We've been giving them different deliverables within this task force. So we have some doing design, PR, creating fat cards. We have some doing lunch and learn development, so working with the departments to have a lunch and learn with the students, just educating them on the matter. We have students doing the catchy campaign slogan, just meeting students where they are, getting them very engaged and interested in the matter. We have promo videos. Our trustee committee, our student trustee, he has his own individual committee that have been working with fat cars and getting students more aware on the matter. We have students doing research, and I really wanted to highlight organization involvement. Now, the organizations have huge influence on this campus and off of this campus, and we want to make sure that they're fully aware of the matter so that they can influence students to be aware and ready to fight for it. If I don't know anything, I do know that students are tired of having lack of resources and so much talent. They're tired of being mistreated when they are supposed to be catered to and helped, developed within their tenure here at TSU. I really wanted to highlight that we're ready, and we've been ready, and we're tired. So that is my conclusion. But we've been working really hard with the students to get them engaged and aware. They're ready to fight, we want to make sure that they direct that towards the proper individuals, so.
Well, thank you all. Sean, do you want to add something to that?
To add real quickly, I want to commend President Taylor, and Vice President Krishonda O'Quinn. I have watched them as a student do incredible work in the short amount of time in trying to understand this issue and spread it out and get that awareness out and get students on board. So I wanted to commend them for that. They've been working hard, day and night, so that's what I'll add.
Yeah, I appreciate that. They, now, you said you have a video. Daisy, would you want to introduce what they were doing? You might have to stay there. I thank you, you have been said, okay, you got it.
The only thing I'll add is that a group of students on their own went to the other LGIs in the state of Tennessee to compare their space, to compare their experiences. And they have that report, they'll share that with you all in terms of the resources, the spaces that the other LGIs have, and not just LGIs, the, some of the UT systems.
I have a clip for that now, go ahead.
Yes.
The federal government claims the state of Tennessee owes Tennessee State University at least $2 billion in back pay.
Just imagine where TSU would be if we had the money we were owed. We're consistently being criticized and questioned about the conditions of our university. Yet we haven't been given the proper resources to develop our university. If you look at schools in Tennessee, you see how developed their campuses are. We have residence halls in place that have been here since 1950. They've been here since we started. That's how old these residence halls are. And that's just one part of the university that needs to be developed.
So if we can follow up just a little bit from that video, we want to give kind of a perspective on that because as a student, like, it is truly disheartening, right? I feel that as a student, you know, we make, we've made a sacrifice to attend to HBCU. We look at Tennessee State University and a Grammy Award-winning band, a nationally ranked forensic team. We have a research-through sponsored program. We have so many things that are going on that are evolving from students' talent. And I, you know, I had offers from other schools in Tennessee. I was considering UT Knoxville and University of Memphis and all of these neighboring institutions. But I chose TSU because I knew that this would be the place to actually nurture me, to actually pour in, to actually be a family, to actually serve as that HBCU community and standpoint that we all, we were all learning to do. And HBCUs are thriving right now, and more students are kind of waking up and realizing the importance of how much more an HBCU really pours into you and develops you as an individual achieving a successful career. So it's disheartening, it's something that we feel that needs to be continuously developed on a nationwide platform. Everyone needs to know this, everyone needs to see this. It's, it's no way we can, you know, look at this and say, oh, it's a coincidence. We know the root to these issues. Us as African-Americans have been fighting for equal access in education since we've been in this country. And I do feel like, you know, it's about time that we continue to stand up and continue to fight for educational equality. It does not, it is not fair to a student that they have to choose between the quality of life on campus and quality of education. We should be able to receive both. We shouldn't have to choose going to an HBCU over a PWI because HBCU is what's here for us personally and valuable. But a PWI might have state-of-the-art technology and residence percent. TSU students have enough talent to deserve everything else that we see, every other student get. And I guess a point to attorney Benjamin Scott, when he came to speak to us, you know, he mentioned the narrative of being three-fourths of a person. That's really how we feel. That's really how we feel. Those type of things are reflected in financial resources and academic development and programs, like. So I do want to urge each of you to reach into your communities, reach into your entities, your databases, your networks, to inform people of what we really have to face because the students need to support. The students will lead this initiative, but we need to lead this initiative with administration and alumni and the community and really all that understands beside us because this isn't the first time, but we want this to be the last time that we feel as students, we've been undervalued and underrepresented and unaccounted for. So thank you so much for giving us that time. We do plan to, you know, move forward with strategic action.
I want to thank you, and Dr. Glover, these, this young lady and these two gentlemen here, so professional, so very well-spoken, so very well-dressed. And the way in which they handle themselves is a testament to the success of what you have accomplished here at Tennessee State University amid the disparities that are present. Again, lady and gentle men, thank you so much. You all are awesome, and I appreciate you and continue in the way in which you're moving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I go to the President's Report. I want to just say that when the students, they're fine today, but when the students went to the various But when the students went to the various universities and saw their living conditions, they saw their residence halls, they saw this, they saw their student center.
Obie McKenzie.
They saw their, uh, football stadium, the athletics complexes. I mean, they actually were crying to me and it was a very emotional moment. They were saying, why? Why would they do us like this? What did we do wrong? Why is TSU treated like this? I mean, there, it was an emotional moment for everybody because the, the reality hit them. When they went to see it and saw what the others had that they were missing. And they said, well, how did we achieve so much in spite of? And so what if? I said, well, we're, we're working on it. And then the good news is that we have, we have met with the governor, Representative Love and I, met with the governor and his team and it was a very good meeting. We're in conversations. Uh, the governor called me yesterday and we talked about it some more. And it's, it's, uh, we're, we're on the way. And, uh, so unlike some universities where they just push it aside and they're not, uh, paying attention to this, you know, they are really listening. And, and I believe that they are, you know, gonna, gonna sit down and just have some more conversations about this and see what's going to come out of it. That's where we are with this. And so I keep telling the students to just let's, let's hold tight and see where we are. Don't, don't, don't be impatient. Let's just work through things together. So I thank you all again. Um, and it was an emotional moment and, and then and some today, but we're okay. And we're going to get through this and you're right. So we thank you for that. All right. I want to go now to the next part of the president's report. So I just have an executive summary. The news continues to be good. The, the financial position remains strong, but our endowment is still at a hundred million. The research funding is a hundred million. We like those hundred million dollar numbers. Uh, we're on part of breaking another record. Uh, I mentioned last time that we were up for, uh, we had asked for a Montreal port in December of this, of next month. But because they found the technical out, well, the, what the snafu, we were able to correct that in, in, in March when we submitted it. So they did meet twice here in the June meeting. They, they took us off that Montreal. And so this first year class again is, is a large first year class. This is just a summary. Uh, we're on path to go from R two to R one, a good path. Uh, so today we want to address a significant funding and to tell you what we've done with this, uh, $250 million that the legislature and the budget, uh, last, well, year, well, two years ago now. Then they'll have to do the audit update. And I have to, everybody said homecoming was an enjoyable success and the parade was shown on everywhere. Okay, so I'll start with the, the good news, TSU and the news that we are featured in, in Coca-Cola in a commercial. We're on HBCU. Um, I, I was waiting to hear from them. Kelly Sharha waited to hear to see if they had selected us. And then someone sent me a copy of it. So we were, we were the HBCU that they selected. So that's really, really good. Uh, the student leaders, as you just heard from, they're, they're taking the lead in this 2.1 billion underfunding. Uh, and we're moving forward with that. Now, our music, our commercial music program, Billboard magazine named us one of the best music programs in the world. That is, it was two, two HBCUs made it and that's Howard and TSU. So we were really excited about that. The next one, you saw our robot, you saw Blue who came in earlier today. And Tennessee had to stir them. You got lots of papers over there that show just how we have this artificial intelligence, just the technology innovation we're doing. As Ravel Milton, she deserves her props. We mentioned it earlier, the top fifty women leaders in education. And then she was named one of the top experts in artificial intelligence. And she was invited to Harvard to present to them, uh, what we're doing in artificial intelligence. And then the ESPN Sports Center featured, uh, football homecoming uniforms. They were, uh, they were excited about the, how they look, the men's tennis, the men's tennis team, uh, crowned, uh, 2023 HBCU tennis national champions. So that's just some of the good things I want to just, the, the points of pride. So let's go to recruitment enrollment. We have another large first year class. Uh, we're, we're controlling the growth of our first year of students to make sure it's in line with our bill of housing. We don't want to get in a situation that, where we don't have enough housing to house the students and their hotels will not be approved. So we were just saying to, to get away from all of that, we're just going to align our marketing recruiting efforts just to match to, to be in line with the bill of housing. And we're also trying to work on retention. And again, as you heard from Dean Stevenson earlier, we're managing housing issues. We do not have a housing crisis right now and we're working on graduate enrollment, growing that. So the enrollment data, you can see it just went back, it was five or six years really. Went from, uh, 2018 to where we are now. We're, we're, we're leveling off. We're, you know, just under eighty-two hundred students for this fall. First year data follows that seventeen sixty-six. You know, it's the second highest, you know, where last year we had, we had thirty-three sixty-seven and now we add seventeen sixty-six. And we hope to be around a sixteen, seventeen hundred mark. That's where we are. That's manageable for us. That's what we're looking for. Uh, then we've expanded the student support, the health counseling. I said, we talked about admissions earlier, digital recruitment, global recruitment. So we're, we're just doing more in student support. Next. Next. So let's move quick as a financial position, just to say a couple charts on that. That our financial position remains strong. We're pleased about that. Admission endowment is more than double. Reserves are strong, over fifty million. The CFI, the measures, uh, you know, the financial stability of the university is three point O's average. We're three point eight five. So because we completely overhaul our accounting and financial area, we work hard in those areas. And then we corrected prior audit finance. So we've sealed our best financial position ever and we're glad about that. Now the audits, the June thirty, June thirty twenty-two, it's currently being performed. It's almost complete. I don't know quite the ending status of it or when the interim will be issued. But as I, see my, my intelligence tells me that it's, it's almost, it's almost done. And we were told, we took the substantive measures to correct the prior audit findings. An independent CPA firm came in. We had to have for Saks to have something give to Saks. And they, he confirmed that those findings have been corrected. We have discussed that with the auditors, that there's, uh, some conversation still going on about one of the issues with cash. But we're, you know, in our, in our opinion, the, the findings have been corrected. Now we've enhanced the management team admission earlier. We just kind of implemented several policies just to make sure that the procedures that we need to perform monthly are performed and they're reviewed on a monthly basis and any correction or adjustments we made are being made. Uh, and now as, as he, as Mr. Evans just finished going through, uh, the controllers office did a special review, uh, and issued a report and there were twelve findings, uh, twelve points were, never find twelve points that we responded to, uh, trying to address the substantive issues in that report. And we get a, we give an update of that each, at each board meeting, each quarterly meeting, uh, to the resolution addressing those findings. And the, the second audit, well, not second, one of the many audits is a forensic audit is going on now. Um, and it started early August. We provide the information to, as requested to the forensic auditors. So as they provide, as they make requests, we try to get the information back to them as quickly as possible. We don't have any, any status to put on that yet. Hopefully, I understand that the date is mid, mid, mid-December, that it should be complete. So we, the next few days, we probably should know something to update you on. And then that mission endowment had grown from, I measured two, twenty-fourteen for the time. The first year after I've got here to forty-two point nine, you know, you to one-on-one as of June thirty. We're trying to correct it now, trying to update now through the end of October. So we increased to fifty-seven million dollars, which is really, really good. Next, uh, grants and research. Grants, um, last year, uh, as June thirty was one hundred million, below one hundred million. Even from now to, from, from July one to earlier this week, it was fifty-three million. So we are, we've already exceeded half of that, the half of, half point mark. Uh, right now, we're not quite halfway through the fiscal year. So we're hopeful we can, we can eclipse that one hundred million again this year. So that, that consists of ninety awards from different agencies. Now let me move over to our R two to R one. There have been some major changes in the, in the current classifications. Uh, the Carnegie Foundation and AIC, they've modernized the, the classification. They want to shift to multi-dimensional categories that will reflect more of what's happening today's college universities. Okay, so before, uh, the R one designation, we were trying to back into it to see what actually the university had to do to, to go to R one. But right now they, they issued something a few days ago and, you know, we were all a part of that, you know, as university president, several of us were, uh, really on top of this and in meetings and speaking with President Ted and others about this. And, uh, there were several HBCUs, not just me, not just myself. We were just there, uh, probably them even more so than I was, trying to get a better way to classify this so that more HBCUs could be a part of this. So they made it very simple. I looked at the second one first. R two methodology that changed five million dollars in research spending, twenty research doctorates. That's it for R two. So we meet that. To get to R one, we need fifty million dollars in total research spending. Now five, from five to fifty, then from twenty to seventy, research doctorates. And that's important because we have, uh, I think it was sixty-nine doctorates, but they're all qualified, they're our research doctorates. I think our number for research doctors were about thirty-five, so maybe thirty-seven. So we're, we're, we're creeping up there. So we have to get more, have to get more programs, get those standing and then graduate the students. So that's where we are with that. So we're not far away. We just want to make it this next time around, but we will make it, I believe, the second time around. The fifty million and the research, we go back to the second, I want to say one more point. Fifty million in total research spending. You notice we said a hundred million we had. That's not all research spending. They don't look at how many, how many grants you bring in. They look, it's expenditures. And so we had, uh, it, we have probably about a fourth of what we need. You know, the fifty million, probably about a fourth of that would, would qualify. So to make it really work, we need about twenty, twenty million in total research spending. That's my estimation. Now, let me switch now over to TSU and the funding. Just in comparison, there are two land-grant institutions. So we're going to compare the two. So before we do that, in talking to people and talking to the governor, in meeting with the governor's office, um, the last month, uh, maybe earlier this month or late last month, I forgot the exact day. And meeting with the, the governor's office and in talking to people around the country, even the people in Washington, they're not really schooled on land, uh, on the moral acts and the land grant, the real meaning. So I thought I'd take a moment, just a moment, let's go over that with you. So we, we, we have a higher understanding of the land-grant institutions. So next. So, uh, they were designated three types of land grants, eighteen sixty-two, eighteen ninety and nineteen ninety-four. Just as you know, those, in eighteen sixty-two, it was time slavery was ending. Um, and, and we had to do more than cotton is king. And so there were no more slaves that had to build the economy and to do the things that, that, that they once did. There had to be a way to teach agriculture and engineering, mechanical arts, military science and other areas that would help us, help get this country into a different, uh, standpoint. So they provided grants in the form of federal lands to each state. And those, those, they could sell those lands to establish public institutions. That's under the, the moral act. So there were two land-grant institutions in Tennessee. The, there are only two, there are several universities here, but only two are land-grant institutions. Tennessee State University and the University of Tennessee. The federal mandate for equitable funding relates to funding of these two universities. This underscores the emphasis on the funds that's provided to TSU and UT. While everybody should enjoy equitable funding. It's nice when you have equitable funding. But I, but there are only two universities in this state that the federal government requires equitable funding. And so the first act, Moral Act of eighteen sixty-two, again, was in, came about the Industrial Revolution, the growing demand for agriculture and tech, technical education, some way to work the land they needed. Cause no, there were nobody else there now to work this land. Because your, 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 your group that you had doing all the work was now freed. And so, but, and higher education was not available for these agricultural workers, these industrial workers. So this act was intended to, to just provide the population with education to relate to their daily lives. But it did not include any African Americans. Therefore, next, another act was needed, more education was needed to address African Americans. So it started, um, in the late nineteen eighty, eighteen, late eighteen eighty-eight, nineties. And that's when we started, uh, eighteen ninety is when it really got passed to provide additional funding and endowment for land grant. And it had to prohibit it, uh, any given money in a state that had any kind of racial distinction in your admissions and treatment. So you couldn't have that. And but however, they could, you could take money they gave you. And if you were to not want any African Americans to go to your university, like to go to UT, um, you could set up a separate school for the African Americans at that time. You could see if you get your funds. You can either allow, so the first order discrimination was when you were not allowed to even go to the land-grant institution. So you could provide a separate institution, I U T S U for African Americans, or you could just allow to go to your schools. So as a result of that, we just started eighteen ninety land grants, where that came about. And that land-grant institutions have a federal mandate for equitable funding of universities. Next one. So the, what it says, I just gave you the site, the chapter and verse of the Moral Act of eighteen ninety. And land-grant institutions have a federal mandate for equitable funding. It says, and I quoted from the law, that the funds received in such state or territory be equitably divided. Then a little further down, it says, and for it must have a just and equitable division of the funds. So it's, it's in black and white in there. Later on, the Indians came back in nineteen ninety-four and saying, what about us? You know, we had land taken from us, so what about us? So the third land-grant act was given to Native, Native American tribal colleges, nineteen ninety-four. They're called the nineteen ninety-four land grants. The subject of that's not really included so much in this presentation. That was just thrown out. Now specifically TSU underfunding, there are two levels of underfunding that we're discussing. There's underfunding as determined by the state joint land grant funding study committee. That's a committee from the state of Tennessee. That's the first one. The second one is underfunding that was determined federally. It's by the joint study by US Department of Agriculture and by the Department of Education. So let's take the first one. The first pot of money that was underfunded. That's the state of Tennessee joint land grant funding study committee. And so here's, so the methodology was mo, most of the land grant could pass the grants. And it was large of agriculture. And that time period was from nineteen fifty-seven to twenty twenty-one. And that was determined that TSU was, by the state, was determined to be five hundred and forty-four million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That, that's what the state budget office came up with. And I did a schedule to show each year from nineteen fifty-seven. It's hard to read, but it is, I was trying to get you to see every year you add it up. And the to, that total comes to five hundred and forty-four million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars from nineteen fifty-seven to two thousand twenty-one. And it's no small sums. Now, that TSU was provided towards that fifty million for the fiscal year began July one, twenty twenty-two. And that's really significant because, uh, the governor put his budget and the legislature, you know, kept it in the budget, stipulated for campus infrastructure. And then we received an addition of sixty-eight million for engineering building. It came from regular appropriations. We're not, we're not downing that. We're just saying then confidence, the, the, it's not a part of the two hundred and fifty million, but it's significant nonetheless. But it came from regular appropriations for our Tennessee universities. And now how it's being used. I want you to take note because I'm all, I'm often asked, how is the two hundred and fifty million dollars being used? So you can see within the master plan, the lighting, the environment service facility, the roofing, electrical master plan, some more, and the library and the grad research. I mean, you can see a lot within the planning phase, R two, R one planning where we're starting. The entrepreneurship and the industry partnerships, the structure, lots of renovation that we restored earlier halls. So the whole, the whole two hundred and fifty million dollars is accounted for. And the first half of already underway and the rest are starting as the days go by. And then we have some proposed use of the remaining two hundred and ninety-four million. You can see that, how we plan to use it again. It can only be used for infrastructure. So these are the infrastructure numbers and what we're looking for in this remaining two hundred and ninety-four billion. So it's a five, the two fifty, the two ninety-four, to get to five hundred and So it's a five, the two fifty, the two ninety four, to get the five hundred and forty four billion that we were underfunded by. Now let's go to the next slide, the federal studies. As you were, the letter came out September, September eighteenth. And so the letter came from them, it found that TSU had been underfunded by two point one billion dollars. Uh the Moral Act again required, if you choose to open that second school to serve black students. You must have an equitable distribution of funds between eighteen sixty two and eighteen ninety land grants. And equitable funding has caused a severe financial gap in our last thirty years alone. So the two million, the exact number, two billion, one hundred and forty seven million, seven hundred and eighty four thousand, seven hundred and four, I know it by heart now. And we've been available for Tennessee State University. Now, next chart. This is how it would happen. Once we got the letter, I went to Washington. And I met with, I tried to meet with the Secretary uh Education, but but it was just one of those weeks I couldn't get to him. But I did meet with the person who reported to him, the, I met with the uh the chief economist. So that's when he walked me through, and at first there was hesitation, but you know, it persists, it pays off. And so we met with with the ag and education and ag, the education takes the lead. So students also went to Washington, they mentioned to you, and they had talked, they didn't get to as much detail. But they went and visited them to raise the issue of what had happened at TSU. So this was addressed to underfunding, so I wanted to review the methodology next time. And so I just spent several hours to see how they had done it. And they took the lead and, I mean, education took the lead, next. Now this, the next chart shows each HBCU, there were, there are sixteen on this chart. Of course, there are nineteen, but there are sixteen on the and and here uh on this chart that shows thirteen billion in total. You can see the the top three, Tennessee State, North Carolina, that's A and T, and Florida, that's uh FAMU. And so we've talked, the three of us, we've we've talked, in fact, almost. Several of these presidents from these universities have called me. I mean, I feel calls almost all day, and several of them have called representative, well, I'm not sure if all the students have, but. Several other individuals on campus have called representatives of love also. So we, we spend a lot of our time, you know, explaining to them. You know, what happened, how it happened, and plus they have made, the government has, federal government has made themselves available. To meet with us if we choose, just let them know, they will come and explain how to do it and what's in the strategy that we, they think we should employ. Next, underfunding this two point one billion was determined on a per-student basis. It over three, a thirty three year period. So a letter was sent to all sixteen governors. Again, this is separate from the five hundred and forty four million, Tim. Tim, I mean, next, okay, this is the calculation. I had to get their permission to to show this because it had, it had not been received at the time. What's highlighted is how they determined this. They took the state appropriation for each of both the universities, and I'm using Tennessee, that's where we are. We did it for every single school, and I do have those calculations too. The state appropriation, the total amount, I'm using one year only, just so you can see. For UT was four hundred and sixty million, seven hundred and forty one thousand, one hundred and forty four dollars. For TSU for the same period of time, sixty three million, two hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and thirty six dollars. Again, on a per-student basis, UT had thirty thousand five fifty nine on the record that they have. And then we had seven, six, fifteen million, that was a COVID year, that was a COVID year. So to get them, that's to get the amount per student, you divide the two. The amount per student, fifteen thousand oh seven seven for UT, eight three oh four for TSU. Like one of the students, and the student is still here, who asked me, they said, does that mean? It was a very uh pointed question, does that mean that a UT student is valued higher than a TSU student? Well, that's a piercing question, and that's at the time, that that there was an emotion and it was teary when you ask questions like that. And so that difference per student is six thousand seven hundred and seventy three dollars. A part of the seven thousand six hundred and fifteen students, that's fifty one million, five hundred and seven, six thousand, three hundred and eighty five dollars, just for the one year loan for twenty twenty. That was just one year. Next chart. Yeah, let's go to the next one, so I can't, that's just the words. Total in the fund, as you can see, was fifty one thousand, and the next one, fifty one million, fifty one million. So this is what, you look at every single year. Because you look at the last number, well, twenty twenty, that's a fifty one million, I keep saying thousand, fifty one million. Looking from nineteen eighty seven to forty one million, forty one point two, forty three, fifty three, forty nine, forty nine, fifty three, sixty two, six. Now this is the underfunding numbers, and then two thousand four, I don't have anything with two thousand two and three that was on their chart. One twenty seven million, one fifty million. You can see every year, there was a a substantial underfunding. And so there was adjustment they took out to, because there were some things that they didn't control for. And that was two million, one hundred and forty seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty four, two billion. One forty seven million, seven hundred and eighty four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars, that is very significant. Now, next chart. So, let's see, we have just a couple more charts, coming down to the end. So the restoration plan, in meeting with several of you and getting your comments. We wanted to, this is the whole two point one billion dollars. So I see Pinnock, were you, it's it 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 was sinking in with us, you said, don't try to shortchange it. Put the plan together and let the board see it, that's what we're doing. Year one, we're late in the year, the letter came out September. We're asking for, our plan is to ask for two hundred and eighty five million dollars. And year two, just split the the rest of the four fifty, the rest of the year, and the last, the residual added in year five. Go to the next one. And here's how we plan to use year one. We must get financing for R two to R one. Those program updates are, will make the difference in whether we go from R two to R one. So we put in seventy five million for that, that includes more, it includes faculty, it includes the the staff, as you must have. All the, I mean, you know, every, anything pertaining to that program. So we've been costing it out, and it was like over seventy five million, so seventy five million dollars. And then the STEM center, phase one, it's going to cost more than that. But the technology we have, Dr. Muttler, when he's going around the country, said it's smart center we have, but it's not really. Uh housed anywhere, we have to get our smart center and market that, because that's going to be our future. That's, everybody carves out a niche, he says, what we want to do among HBCUs, but then what we're going to do worldwide. And the artificial intelligence worldwide. And then we had to have something provided for scholarships and endowment, that's twenty eight million. Then the football field and the academic uh sports complex, we had a fifty two million, five forty seven, five hundred. That's this total ask for year one. Now, we have, we're we're looking at some more thoughts for in the future, we don't have those really together yet. I want to reiterate, there are two different levels of underfunding. The first one is by the state la- joint land grant funding study committee. That was five hundred and forty four million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty seven dollars. Then there's the underfund that's determined federally by the joint study committee. Commitment from USDA and DOE, that was two billion, one hundred and forty seven million, seven hundred and eighty four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. Those two, two different funds, sets of funds. Five hundred and forty four, we already got started, we got two fifty of that, and we have a plan for the remainder. And now we're we're asking for the two eighty five to come out, that first two point one billion. And so, again, I'm just, it's here, so the state of Tennessee, five hundred and forty four, I was, it's worth showing there again. Tennessee from nineteen fifty seven to twenty twenty one, five hundred and forty four million. Then the federal chart, next, the federal study, two point one billion. So I just wanted to compare, you can see there are two different pots of fun, and let's go to the last one, I believe, the last chart. So there's a plan for recovery. So we're currently developing an additional timeline and plan for the recovery of the receipt of the remaining funds of. Funding for student success, their program enhancements, campus approval, all those will be the priority uh of the two point one billion. And then I think the last one, next steps. So we've been in meetings with the governor and a few legislators regarding this underfunding and the future plans. We're going to continue those conversations with the governor and the legislature throughout the next several months. And we're, we've been holding meetings with the stakeholders. We've talked with students, the staff, the faculty, the alum, the community members, the ministers, that we have, the the safe TSU colleagues. We met with several individuals. Um now, we did, the economists have spoken to me. They had a short discussion about going back beyond nineteen eighty seven, and that will yield even higher underfunding amounts. And so we went back and just did a quick and dirty estimate from nineteen fifty six to nineteen eighty six, and then from twenty twenty. Well, we asked twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, it was over a billion dollars, even in that, for those calculations. We're not pursuing that at this time, but I just want you to know that there there's thinking about going even back further than nineteen eighty seven. And so this is where we are, and this is, this is a serious matter. And we have to have understand that it's a serious matter, it's going to take a lot of educating. But we've had some good steps forward, I'm very encouraged by the conversations we've had with the le- with the legislation, with the governor. And so uh I'm very hopeful. So we're, we've sent the letter, the governor's received a letter from us. Well, actually, we're sending to to Joseph Wada's office. But um so we're, we're hopeful and we're going to continue to march. And so, and I welcome your thoughts and comments, again, you've given me a lot of feedback, a lot of input, and I really appreciate that. So we were able to, uh Dr. Allen and I were able to pull these numbers together. Let me see, Dr. Allen, Mr. Winrow, and Dr. Johnson. I thank you all for helping pull these numbers together, of course, Lawrence, thank you. Lawrence looks up and says, what about me? No. And then Dr. Phillips, I'm going to just thank all of you for your help in this, so.
Yeah, Dr. Love, just want to make sure I understand, on the five hundred million of state funds. We were given two hundred and fifty million. Now, do we have to uh obtain approval to spend that two hundred and fifty million? And is it, am I correct that it cannot be used on any income type producing facility?
That's correct, the two hundred and, well, the two hundred and fifty million. Was uh had to provision that is only for uh infrastructure, campus infrastructure. But is, that wasn't, the the rule that we, just general rules, that we, the state is, will not fund a quote business enterprise for us. And so we have um the auxiliary services like uh a football stadium, uh on that football, or like food. Um residence halls, those are profit-making, so they won't fund those.
So do we have to get approval for each expenditure, or we can just spend all that two hundred and fifty million?
Well, we're working with TBR, you know, we, you know, we can't just.
Well, I just want to make sure, you know, I want to make sure everybody understands that we just can't spend that money.
We're working with TBR, and Mr. Will Rafford had to leave and go to the CHAC meeting. But, you know, he's been, he he is the person, I didn't call his name, he really did help us out a lot on this. Mr. Will, Mr. Will, Will Rafford, um I mean, is, has the broad concept, the specific concept. He has it all, and so, the TSU grant, we were so, so happy that we were able to, I mean, a stroke of just a blessing. To get him to come to work at TSU, and he has been just amazing. So yes, and he's working with TBR, he's our point person. And that's how we are able to, uh I mean, because we can't go ourselves, he just takes care of all of that. So yes, TBR is kind of like the, is helping us with this. And Dr. Allen.
So to answer that question, yes, uh each project has to go through the state, through the state building commission. To be approved before we can move forward.
Okay, uh the the other thing, other question I have very quickly, on the two point one billion. Those doc numbers that you presented, and thank you for that information you sent us. And the opportunity to uh respond, I was so excited, I responded at seven in the morning. So but, but thank you so much for that, they gave us a lot of information. But on the two point one billion, those, the breakdown that you gave us here. Has that been discussed with the governor?
No, just the first year, and it was not a formal discussion, it was just in a conversation. I just mentioned to her, but I think Representative Love had talked to him about. Uh one of the components of that two hundred eighty five, I don't think that number was ever floated to the governor, uh of two hundred eighty five million. I think Representative Love had a conversation, and uh maybe a hundred million or so may have come up. But, but that's why we needed to make sure that we could see just the details of everything. And where we headed with this, that's always important, we know that now, because over the next, I tell you, a day doesn't pass. Without getting a phone call from somebody in the media to ask questions about this and about that, what are you going to do? Is there a lawsuit? What I mean, what's going to, I mean, get it all the time.
That's, I still need, I need clarity, two point one billion. Two point one billion.
Has the state of Tennessee accepted with two billion dollars as a legal obligation of the state of Tennessee?
Uh not yet, uh not to my knowledge, I think it is, it's still so new. Remember, it came out uh September eighteenth, and this is November, well, it's been two months. And so I'm not sure where they are, I have not spoken with the leaders of the various committees yet. I have spoken with some legislators, but not the ones who will actually make decisions. Or uh to to put something in a budget. But um that I can only, I can only just say what I've heard in the news. But I don't know where they are in it, in the process, we do plan to continue the meetings, as of this date though, I don't have an answer to that question.
Now, may I ask this one question? This two point one billion, does that money have to come from the state of Tennessee or the federal government?
The federal government did the study of what was, of the underfunding in the state of Tennessee. Between, as you, as you relate to the University of Tennessee and Tennessee State University, so it doesn't come from the federal government. Federal government just made the acknowledgement that this is the underfunding of the state, so to pursue it at the state level.
So the bottom line is this. By all of the information that has been presented to us. It is the responsibility in our thinking of the state of Tennessee. To provide us regardless of how long it takes, two point one billion B dollars, is that correct?
That's the level of underfunding, yeah, that's the level of underfunding.
The 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 situation begins with someone accepting the legal obligation. To pay Tennessee State the two point one billion. That will undoubtedly be pushed back on by either the state or the federal government, and will have to be adjudicated in the courts. And that has a major implication on the creditworthiness, not only of the state, but of the United States. Particularly given that debt on either book, on either balance sheet. Will have a major impact on the cost of capital that they will have to pay to raise money to do other things that are already in their strategic plans. And that's why the game begins with, has it been adjudicated? What court system says the obligation uh is there and who it belongs to officially? Before we can really recommend a plan to get our money. There are many financial instruments that will allow them to pay us over time, but the game begins. With it being accepted as a legal obligation on the balance sheets of either the states or the federal government.
Mr. Lewis.
I concur with everything Hope and McKenzie had said. But I also want to remind all of us, especially the trustees. And those that will meet with the governor, the new governor whenever that time happens. The new president, whenever that time happens. It is better to negotiate than to litigate. It never fails if we negotiate, even if we have to accept less than two point one billion dollars. It is better to negotiate this matter than to litigate it. If we have to litigate it, so be it, but it'll be less expensive if we negotiate this matter.
Well, I totally agree with you, and that's why uh I I have entertained questions from attorneys from across the state. Uh from alums, from students who stopped me to say, I want to join the lawsuits, I swear, there is no lawsuit. We are, a letter came out in in September, we're still in the meeting phase, there is no lawsuit. You know, I can't, I don't know where it's going to end, I can't say that. You know, I can't, I don't know where it's gonna end, or I can't say that won't be one ever. But I can say, as we sit here today, lawsuit is not what we're talking about. Litigation is not, not on our agenda. What's on our agenda right now is conversations, making sure that the chairs of the various committees understand where we are. And just sitting down with them, having face-to-face conversations. And what, what can happen is, like, what I can accept is when they, they say to me, and it has been said to me, let's just say, bygones be bygones. Well, I tell them, it's never too late to do what's right. This happened a long time ago, you can always right a wrong. And so, we don't just let things go. And the second, the second point that was made to me was that, that we have to, I think, I mean, I've told you when they said, so you can look at some other things other than just having this, the, the TSU and UT on a per student basis. Look at program, the comprehensiveness. The reason that doesn't work, it's like, that's a Jack, that was a Jackson State University case. When, when the formula was, you were funded based on the number of programs that you had. And schools, Jackson State and even Tennessee State have, had asked for certain programs. And those programs were denied. But the, the, the other counterpart had those programs and were given those programs. So, they said, well, just try to fix it. You can't fix it at this point. Because, I, I use analogy, if you bake a cake and forget the flavor, you can't open the cake up and pour in the flavor. You have to bake a new cake. You have to get a brand-new way of allocating. That's how the federal government looked at it. They said, we've tried this program thing, and it didn't work. So, what I'm gonna look at now is a number of students. If you look at it per student basis, they should all be treated equally, equitably. And that's how this came about, from this president sitting around a table like us, talking about how the match wasn't made. And I was the only one who said, well, we got our match for the last three, we've been getting a match. But then they took it beyond that and said, let's look at it on a per student basis. You know, on the cake analogy, I do feel hypocritical, seeing how I cook cakes.
Okay, Dr. Glover, and, and I'm, I'm gonna go to Dr. Johnson and then to Dr. Lewis. But, um, one, I wanna thank you for this tremendous amount of information that, uh, is being presented. And, and my appreciation to Representative, am I using this correct title? Representative Love.
Yes.
For the meetings with you. But I do think that there should be a board member, uh, involved in the meetings with the governor and et cetera. I, I could, I could voluntold someone, but, uh...
You have to report these right now.
I agree a hundred percent.
And, and, and I just really think, and, and the reason I feel that way is because I think it says to the state, the board is involved. And that was something that, you know, we've been criticized before. But, um, I, I see a couple of people there that would be, uh, very good attorney, uh, Johnson and, uh, Mr. Van Pennock. I'll let you select which one.
Well, that'd be helpful.
Or whatever, but I really do think the board has to be intricately involved in this process. And you've done an outstanding job, and, and, and of course, having had an accounting background, I could follow all those numbers you had running across the page. I do feel sorry for the state and, and the Department of Economics, because we have a president that's a CPA, because I'm sure she gave them a fit. But thank you for those analysis that you put. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, so I think it's important that we be able to uncouple in the two point one, uncouple land grant restrictions from that money. So, so that we can do auxiliary services and utilize endowment. So, money that we would have saved and put into our endowment, we were unable to use to put into our endowment because we had to cover the costs of our traditional land grant activities.
And that's the students, that is one of the main conversations with the student and student leaders.
Yeah.
Their conversation is, I had to borrow money to go to school. And they may have to borrow anyway, I don't know, but their conversation is, if I, if we had had the funding, I could have possibly been in a different category, and I have to borrow funds to go to school. And I have to make the, so there are different reasons, there are different things being said, but you got a resolution, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, about that, yes, I do, I do, I do, this coming up.
Oh, you have some finished questions.
It, it's gonna come up next, but that's, just, just for me, let's finish the questions, uh, that we have. Dr. Lewis?
Just one question, I'm gonna go back a whole lot of slides. Somewhere on that, your slides, I saw where two committees at the state chose to spend two million dollars for a forensic audit. The question is, did the state actually pay a auditing firm two million dollars to audit this institution?
It was a contract.
We don't know what was paid, because we're not pre-pressing that information. We can only report the request, the approval. But I mean, we don't know whether it was, you know...
It wasn't that the RFP for two million dollars.
We don't know whether it was two million dollars, or it was five hundred thousand. We don't know, but they, they asked, that what was appropriate was two million. I can't imagine already costing two million dollars, being audited myself. I can't imagine it costing two million dollars. But, but that's, but that's what...
Thank you very much.
Trustee, women.
Someone to go to the, uh, meet with the governor from the board, can we coordinate that? Because, um, I'm working with Darrell and, and, um, Rashonda, meeting with the governor. We're on a student level, I don't want us to be speaking on two different things or not be in connection with one another, is that, is that...
Oh, I think that's an excellent comment that you're making, uh, because we, in everything that we do, we all gotta be on the same page and say the same thing. Now, I'm gonna leave that coordination to the president in terms of coordinating with you.
Well, the governor's ready, the governor wants to meet with the students. He thinks he, you know, he really, he wants to sit down and have a conversation with the students. And so, they're working on that right now. And so, as we say, students, you know, I'll probably be with them and maybe, you know, the one, another board member.
Well, I, I'm just...
You know, I'm just saying.
I'm just going to say now, I think we need to, I think it needs, and if I'm out of order, y'all tell me. I think I need to make this a formal ask, and I don't know which one of you all want to do it, or someone else. But I do think there has to be, from the state level of what we observe, we're doing, board involvement. Now, I can also say, I'll leave it to you to voluntold one of them.
Lawrence has the next one of the resolution.
Huh? Yeah, okay, okay. So, anyway, but I, that's, I think, okay, I think that's very critical that we do that. And, and in the next item, we need to go to Attorney Pendleton, is that correct?
Yeah, this just pertains to the board resolution, so, um, that we have in your board materials that is sort of really a starting point for the board in terms of taking official action and saying, we're engaged, we wanna be involved. And if you read through this on page one eighty-four of the materials, um, in terms of laying out sort of the, um, the background, uh, and with even the last part of it directly saying that the board now hereby resolves, the board hereby now resolves to work directly with the TSU administration, the Office of the Governor, and the General Assembly to implement reasonable funding appropriation measures in an expedited and timely manner to address TSU's historical underfunding and achieve an equitable model for the two institutions referring, previously referring to UT and TSU in the twenty twenty-four legislative session and thereafter.
So, he just ran into our record, the, the board resolution that, uh, Dr. Cole had, um, that said she wanted to have you, and he worked on getting it to what the right wordsmithing together on this. And so, uh, so I hope you got this part of the record, the resolution that, that you wanted to go on record as having done.
Page one eighty, page one eighty-four, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, and, and if I just, I'm, I'm sorry. If I just might point out, the last sentence, the board now hereby resolves to work directly with the TSU administration, Office of the Governor, and the General Assembly to implement reasonable funding appropriation measures in an expedited and timely manner to address TSU's historical underfunding and achieve an equitable funding model for the two institutions in the twenty twenty-four legislative session and thereafter. I read that paragraph, to me, the rest of it is wordsmithing, but this paragraph here is what you're committing, what we as a board are committing to do.
Are we committing to working, uh, to address underfunding and to achieve an equitable funding model for the two institutions?
Two institutions.
We're just concerned about our...
Where's two institutions? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Well, I...
Is it in here?
We said two institutions, but we're saying, yeah, we're saying for twenty twenty-four, in the twenty twenty-four session, that, that's what you had said to me, Dr. Cole, for twenty twenty-four session, you wanted to make sure that the funding was equitable. No, we can't, we're not going backwards as far as the legislature is concerned. But we're saying, we're asking them to go forward with this, these future sessions. What's the, what's the...
Well, I, I mean, personally, I don't, I don't see a need to even reference the other institution. I'm just over...
I'm sorry, I missed, was that at the top?
Lawrence, the last sentence, read it.
Yeah, what is correct?
TSU's historical underfunding and achieve an equitable funding model for the, oh, I see what you're saying.
Model, we don't have a funding, we don't have an equitable funding model right now. So, we're asking for an equitable funding model moving forward. We wanna correct what's happened in the past, then implement a model that will work for the future.
For the two land-grant institutions?
Yeah, 'cause that being what the moral act provides and says, you must receive equitable funding between, for both land-grant institutions, equitable funding in the distribution of funds to those two land-grant institutions.
And, and I don't wanna belabor the point. I don't, I don't, I understand every funding.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I'd like...
Okay, so, I guess, excuse...
We should stick with the obligation that they have to us. The state of Tennessee broke the law, and, you know, I'm, I'm dead against, you know, uh, making an offer to them before we see where they are. The key who makes the first offer in a negotiation loses the negotiation. And basically, we ought to stay focused on what they owe us and, and, and move from there. But allow them to offer us what they wanna do to satisfy the fact that they broke the law. And they're not above the law.
Well, we may, we may not disagree. Trustee, all we're saying is, we have not had a formal meeting, well, we did meet with the governor. We have not met with any legislators yet. I don't know what their thinking is. I don't know whether they're gonna say, well, okay, I, we read the report, give us time to think about it. I don't know what it's gonna be yet. Give us a moment to, to have some meetings with them, and see where, where they are with their thinking.
Okay, let me ask a question, I wanna get back to the resolution. Is it more palatable than that we're interested in achieving an equitable, equitable funding model for Tennessee State University?
For me, it, no, but I don't wanna keep it.
I'm just asking...
What would you take out? You would take out...
No, we, it, it was funding model for Tennessee State University in the twenty twenty-four legislative session and thereafter. Does that hurt anything?
Does that, does that permit them, sorry, does that permit them to have a different model for the other institution, though?
We, we... You say it does?
Well, I, I think this, basically, the law says you must have equitable funding between the two institutions in, in distribution of funds. So, part of it is how do you wanna interpret this? We're saying, if we say equitable funding model for TSU, you, you also have to include, we're saying, whatever you're giving to UT. When we saw that eight thousand dollar difference in per student funding, then we're basically saying that we wanna see that be more equitable, so there's almost a dollar for dollar or equal dollars that are paid to UT and the TSU students on a per student basis.
What if we put between the two institutions? What if we put that word in there?
Yeah.
An equitable funding model between the two institutions? Saying that whatever UT gets per student, we should get.
You may wanna add land-grant institutions, if it's not already in there.
Well, because the theme, uh, premise, everything is the land-grant institution.
Okay, well... Funds received in, funds received in such state or territory be equitably, equitably divided as just an equitable division of funds.
It's a federal mandate for equitable funding, so...
Of the universities.
How would you, how would you prefer to...
This is the problem, you can't have equity by yourself. It has to be split, you, you, you have to develop one model to split, to equitably split the funds between two entities. If we're just talking about Tennessee State, you can't talk about equitable funding, 'cause what are you comparing it to?
Right, okay.
What is inequitable, right? So, what we have to do, so, I think what, what the intention of this is, is to say, we all understand, based on the verbiage of the law, it has to be equitable funding. That can't be solely Tennessee State. It has to be equitably divided between the two land-grant institutions. And I think that's the, the premise of this.
And maybe then we can add, going back to your, your word, maybe we could just substitute for, for between.
Yeah, yeah, we could do that. I understand what you're saying, and thank you for that comment, uh, Attorney Johnson. But I think if we say between, then we're comparing it, you know, we have the two in there. So, if we could, where am I? Uh, okay, so, are there any more discussion on the resolution? Anything else, Attorney Pendleton?
No.
I'm see if you got any more comments, yeah?
No.
Okay, so, at this point, I move to approve the, um, we gotta put the...
The board resolution.
As amended. I move to approve the board resolution as amended on addressing TSU's historical land grant underfunding as contained in the board materials for November sixteen.
Actually, let's first vote on the amendment that would insert between in for the word for. Let's vote on that amendment.
Okay, I move to approve, uh, an amendment to the resolution to enter the word between, uh...
In place of the word for.
In place of the word for.
In the last line of the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to insert the word between instead of for in the resolution, as put, as, as indicated in the November sixteen board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Kurbil.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson. Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Okay, so, um, the motion, uh, is approved. The next motion, I move to approve, um, the adoption of the board resolution as amended on addressing TSU's historical land grant underfunding as contained in the board materials for November sixteen twenty, twenty-three board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the amended board resolution on addressing TSU's historical land grant underfunding as contained in the board materials for the November sixteen twenty twenty-three board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Kurbil.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson. Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the board chair's report, I'll be very brief. I just wanna give a very, a quick update for those that are listening in that we have selected a search firm. The name of the search firm is Academic Search. We also have a minority complex with Apptech Global. Uh, the, um, we will release timelines as we go along in terms of what need to be done. The main objective of this is to make sure, uh, since we have to do this process, is to make sure we get a qualified candidate that is in the best interest of Tennessee State University. There have been no decisions made at this particular point in time. The committee will be comprised of five trustees, nineteen people from the TSU family, five community people, three students, and one council member. There will be an additional two or three people that will be appointed. I wanna thank each and every one of you for all the work that you have done today. It has been a tremendous day, and, uh, I appreciate your being willing to, to do this. That is all I have to say.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, sir.
I just have a question, I'd like to know from Dr. Glover. When you met with the governor and whoever was with you...
Mary Kay?
Yeah.
Did the governor have his legal counsel present?
Not legal counsel, he had, uh, the deputy governor
My crazy man.
And, uh, his chief of staff.
So, he had two people?
Ewie and, uh, Joseph Williams.
No.
That was all I need to know, thank you, Karen.
Is there any additional business?
Just gonna need to say one quick thing before we go, I know it's late. The color purple is totally different from anything we talked today. As you know, we have a TSU graduate who's, who is starring in producing the color purple, Oprah Winfrey. And she's asked all of us to participate, to go by, see it on Christmas Day. We're having, we're working, I'm working with her on that. We're asking to have, everybody have a purple Christmas, we're purple, we get t-shirts that say, the color purple. We have a tree that's gonna be purple, we just do a lot with the purple. And so, I think, since this is, this is broadcast worldwide, that we're asking everybody, if you were, if you're on Christmas Day, take your family, go something purple, and then go watch our alum showcase the color purple.
I'd just like to second that and say that, let's do what we can to support our alum, and we did appreciate her coming here to speak for us for a commitment. If there's no additional business, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, so.
Second.
Second.
Secretary Pendleton, call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Curbill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
The motion is approved, and the meeting is adjourned, thank you so much.